Good afternoon. Welcome to the Glendale Water and Power Commission meeting. Today's date is September 15, 2014. Can we please have roll call?
Yes, and before I proceed with roll call, Commissioner Yao will not be attending today's meeting. Commissioner Camargo?
Here.
President Chan?
Present.
Commissioner O'Gimian? Commissioner Hale?
Here.
Next item, please.
Two consent items. A, approval of the August 4, 2014, meeting minutes.
I'll review them. I have no comments, questions, or edits. And the rest of you? No? Okay, so please have the minutes approved. Next item.
Three GWP Commission staff comments. A, GWP Water Department's 100 years of service.
Commissioners, I'm proud to announce that we have been, or we are going to, we got recognized by the AWWA, American Water Works Association, for 100 year of service to the community. We celebrated officially our 100th year in July of 2014. We were first established in July 1914. And so one of the events that we're planning is on September 30, there will be a proclamation by the mayor, Mayor Sinayan Abad, our 100th year centennial. And following that, on October 1, and this is an invitation for you to participate, we will have a celebration at our UOC for the Water Department, celebrating our 100 years of service to the community. We'll send you information, the details, but we will have, you know, again, a short celebration just to recognize our staff and everybody for the service that we've been providing for the city.
Yeah, that's great. Congratulations. And one question, when did we include power, the power side, in the company?
We're going to have a utility day on October 23.
No, I mean, we served, the Water Department served for 100 years. When did we start providing electricity?
The electric utility was established in 1906. So we did have our 100 year celebration for electric, but I think we didn't do it until 2010, though.
Okay, that's right. Okay, great. Congratulations. I want to say, it's been great. I see the hard work that the general manager and staff are all doing. I personally witnessed a lot of great successes in the last six or seven years I've been on the Commission, and all, I mean, including all areas, environmental, reliability, safety, communications, customer service, et cetera. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Four reports information. A, water conservation update.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of Commission. Hello, my name is Atine Hartunian, and I'm the Public Benefits Coordinator to give you a brief update on our water conservation outreach efforts. We are in the process of finalizing the data to show the effectiveness of mandatory water conservation. We don't have it for today's meeting, however, we will share reports in future Commission meetings, so stand by for that. We're continuing our outreach activities with this very strong media, social media, and advertising campaign. We'll be increasing our outreach efforts for one last push at the end of September into October before the cold and hopefully wet season starts. Many cities like us continue to promote the conservation message, and customers are actually really well being bombarded by messaging throughout Southern California. As you're driving down the freeways, you see the jumbotrons, as you're listening to weather and news and traffic reports, there's always pre and post conservation messages. So all of us are sort of piggybacking off of these messages, and it's working for us, obviously, because everyone's kind of promoting the same message. So our customers are literally being bombarded with conservation messaging, so it's helping all of us reach our conservation goals and raise them awareness. We continue to work with the restaurants, businesses, and multifamily buildings, and they're sending them conservation information as they request it. Our community event presence is extremely strong, and we have had many requests for conservation materials, and continue to distribute brochures, information, and answer questions at every event we attend. We're wrapping up our landscape classes. We have had 12 classes this year. A total of 450 residents have signed up. Our last class will be October 25, and that just shows us that we're going to add more classes next year. So we are in these landscape classes giving away free showerheads, faucet aerators, and all conservation information. And we hope to start a series of Water 101 classes as well as landscape classes. On Sunday, September 14, yesterday, we had our rain barrel workshop and free landscape class event at Descanso Gardens. We worked in accordance with five other cities, including Burbank, Pasadena, South Pasadena, La Cucina, and La Cañada. We had over 500 residents attend this free workshop and landscape class, and over 500 rain barrels were purchased. Since Glendale could only submit 80 names to these classes, our customers are requesting that we do our own rain barrel harvesting workshop, and so we are planning on adding two events this year because we had over 350 customers request on RSVP to this event. And unfortunately, we couldn't, so we will definitely include them in the next two sets. So you'll hear more about those upcoming classes. So this is all I have for today's presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I've got one. So if a resident sees water waste or, you know, watering outside of the normal schedule, what's the best mechanism for them to report that to Glendale Water and Power? And then what's the, what's the next step that the utility takes in terms of ramifications for that water user?
What they do is they can report it anonymously, either by calling our customer service line at 818-548-3300, or they can report it anonymously through our website. If they just go to the Contact Us section, and then the dropdown, they can choose that. And then that goes to our customer service department. And then we issue a first warning letter, and then we issue a second warning letter, and then it continues from there. If we do still notice it, then there's a possibility of getting, for them to get a citation. So we do follow up with the customers.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Four B legislative update.
Good afternoon, President and members of the Commission. My name is Silva Hulian, and I'm here today to give you a brief update on legislative items. Currently, there are no bills to report on. The Governor has until September 30 to sign or veto any bills that were brought forth to him by September 1. The legislature is mostly focused on the November 4 general election. The 2015-16 new session will begin on December 1, so I'll have more to update you in the new year, most probably. But today, I'd like to update you on the water bond, formerly known as the Water Quality Supply and Infrastructure Improvements Act of 2014. The bond replaces the $11.14 billion water bond previously set to go forth in this fall on the ballot. And it will now appear as Proposition 1. The Water Quality Supply and Infrastructure Act of 2014 is a $7.54 billion general obligation bond measure. If approved by voters, the measure would provide funding for new surface and groundwater storage projects, regional water reliability, sustainable groundwater management and cleanup, water recycling, water conservation, watershed protection, and safe drinking water, particularly for disadvantaged communities. Prop 1 is the product of more than five years of discussion and negotiations among lawmakers and stakeholders and others. And the measure was approved by the Governor, Jerry Brown, on August 13. Here, in Glendale, the Glendale Water and Power Department is in the process of developing tools to educate the public about the bond measure. If you have any questions regarding the bond, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have more details, if you'd like.
No, we're good. Thank you.
Actually, yeah, I just have one quick question. And maybe I should just reserve this for later on when we do our agenda forecast. But I think it would be a good idea to get a little bit more granular detail about that bond, and then one of the issues, not an issue, but one of the features of the bond is that there are no earmarks for any utility. So everything is going to be sold out on a competitive basis based on the quality of applications. So it might be a good idea for us to have a public conversation in the context of our Commission meeting to talk about some potential applications that could be used for Glendale.
We'll do that.
And when is our next legislative update?
I would presume at our next.
Let's see the forecast. Let's see the forecast.
December 1.
December?
Yeah.
Okay. And you mentioned the December 1. Okay, so it'll be a good time.
December 1 is the start of the new session.
The start, yeah. Right. Okay.
Thank you.
That would be good. Thank you for the update. Next item, please.
Four C KPI update.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the Commission. My name is Martin Powers, Administrative Associate, and I'm here today to talk to you about our fourth quarter year-end KPIs for 2013-14 fiscal year. There are some areas that required attention, and the staff is monitoring those areas to make sure that the issues are addressed. But the good news is that overall, the utility continues to maintain, and some areas has improved its performance over, in the aggregate, over last fiscal year. I'd like to quickly take you through some of the highlights for each section. Starting off with water, I'd like to point out KPI number three, water imported from MWD. This reflects an increase of 500 million gallons when compared to last fiscal year. The increase in imported water is partially attributed to a decrease in water produced from the Verdugo Basin, KPI number one. And during the fiscal year, 13-14 fiscal year, various wells were taken offline to conduct scheduled rehabilitation and maintenance projects, and two wells were shut off due to continued lowering in groundwater tables. KPI number 14, the city has experienced an increase of eight additional water main breaks over the previous fiscal year, which is attributed to aging infrastructure. And as a result of this increase in water main breaks, the average time to repair, KPI number 15, has increased from 3.7 hours to 4.2 hours when compared to last year. Moving on to electric, the total number of outages, KPI number 27, has increased from 48 last fiscal year to 65 at the end of this fiscal year. This increase is due to the increase in incidence of rodents, mylar balloons, and foliage in the power lines. The figures for preventable outages, KPI 28, percentage of overloaded transformers, KPI 29, and system load factor, KPI 31, have all remained consistent or improved when compared to last fiscal year. And this is attributed to better planning and reductions in load. With regard to safety, I'm happy to report that workplace and vehicle accidents rates, KPI 34 and 35, has significantly improved when compared to last year. And this is attributed to our training of staff programs over the last year. With regard to supply, we've seen a three cent increase in the total power supply expense per KWH, number 49, as when compared to last fiscal year. It's gone from 54 cents to 57 cents. This crease is, was expected. It's the result of seasonal variations, rising natural gas prices, and clean energy mandates. The upward trend in expenses is expected to continue for the foreseeable future. And then finally, with regard to finance, utilities' electric cash reserves, when compared to the city's reserve policy for GWP, KPI number 61, has increased by 21% in the aggregate over last fiscal year, bringing our total reserve up to 79.5 million. And just as a reminder, the council mandate for electric reserve is 124 million. So, and again, this increase, and the continued increase is the result of the electric increase and continued business process enhancement. So that concludes my brief report, and I and/or staff are available to answer any questions you might have.
Going back to 49. I, yeah, you threw out some numbers that I didn't see on here. 49, purchase power cost per kilowatt hour. What did you say it was?
I'm sorry, you said 49?
Yeah, 49. KPI 49.
What's the cost of purchase power?
One moment, please. I believe that I was referencing is it... Commissioner Chan, I'm going to need to, or, excuse me, President Chan, I'm going to need to review this, and if I can get back to you the email for next, at the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Let me try to answer that question. A lot of, there are some requirements that's changing. As you know, regulatory requirements for us with respect to renewables is increasing the price. We've also seen price increases in transmission. So when we include purchase power, that includes not only generation, but also transmission. We've seen increases. We have limited access to our transmission in terms of getting into Glendale. We only have two points or three points where we can bring it in. And there's been restrictions, and we've been negotiating with LADWP with respect to their old pricing. We're trying to get that reduced. And there's also been changes in how we're scheduling on our Pacific DC intertie, which is the majority where the power is being scheduled. So there's been some dynamic changes, and we are meeting regularly now with LA staff to address the transmission requirements with respect to being part of LA's balancing authority, as well as access rights to the different transmission. And if, I don't know if you knew about this, but we sold about 10 megawatts to Skylar, to, mainly coming from IPP. And we have to replace that power with something else. We have been replacing that with. And the coal is one of our cheapest resource. Due to changes in regulation, we're starting to basically offload that.
Okay. Looking at this report, is this the first time that you're presenting it in this format?
No.
No?
No. This is the format that's being presented to the council.
Council.
The council, and the last time we reported, at least the last two times, I think, I believe we have presented this in this format as well.
Okay. Okay, I think it's great that everything's here. I do have a request that maybe next time it could be bigger.
What's your size made?
That's right.
We will do that. We'll make that into.
Yeah, it's a little bit difficult to read, and as you're going, I guess, recording the numbers, where, please go a little bit slower next time.
Sure.
So, okay, so you'll get back to us on the purchase power cost. Now, with the finance, you indicated that our cash reserve is 64% now versus at the end of last year, 43. Now, I noticed the debt to total asset ratio is higher, 37 to 28. Do you want to explain a little bit about that? What's the thinking, the strategy?
What line item?
43.
43.
43 versus, no, 43 and 61.
Madam President, I'm not particularly well-versed with the finances of GWP, the day-to-day finances of GWP. So again, if I would be able to speak to our finance administrator and get back to you, I would appreciate that opportunity.
Okay.
We'll send you an email explaining that line item.
Okay.
I have a sense, but I don't want to misspeak and provide you with incorrect information.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Couple of other questions, if I can. So, thank you, Powers. One of the areas that you commented on is in, what, lines 34 and 35 with respect to safety. And yeah, those are some considerable improvements in safety. So I guess a couple of things related to that. One would be, if you could share a little bit more, you talked about training, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about what you've done in the area of training so far. And then moving forward, knowing that you've made these gains, you know, what are the, what is the thinking about how you maintain this level of safety moving forward?
Well, I'll touch on that briefly, but I believe it's the emphasis that Ramon has put on safety. We've had, we have tailgate meetings on a daily basis. We have trainings, I want to say, is it monthly, Ramon, or is it weekly?
It's monthly.
Monthly, on various aspects of safety, both water and electric. So I really think it comes from the top down, from Mr. Zerner, General Manager, through Ramon, down to the superintendents, and into the field crews. And I, you know, when Steve came aboard, safety was always a priority, but I think that he made it one of the cornerstones when he started with the utility. And Ramon has continued that ongoing.
With respect to driving, one of the training that we implemented is we employed the Smith driving technique. And we also, every vehicle accident, we consider preventable unless proven otherwise. So we do what's called an accident review committee on all vehicle accidents. And those that need to be retrained, we brought in, I don't know if you're familiar with the Smith driving technique. Basically, it's a five-step process that brings awareness to the driving, to the driver as to what's going on on the road. We found that the most effective training that we've been able to bring into our area. And as far as the other accidents related to, a lot of it is, we have, believe it or not, back problems. That's one of the major issues that we're dealing with. And some of those, we're not sure how to prevent them other than making them recognize about the lifting techniques we remind them. And so not, we haven't found the magic bullet to help us with that, what kind of injury.
This is, these back injuries, these are occurring with folks who work out in the field or office workers?
Mainly they have folks that are working out in the field. And some of them are basically because of the time they've spent doing the same work. Eventually, it became, you know, a long-term issue.
Okay. And then, so that reminds me of line number 40 there, where you have average training hours per employee. So that actually went down from the last period to this, so from 6 to 3.5. That is, those are annual hours?
Correct. And that's correct. And then you would see that go up next period. The reason for the drop is prior to this, if you recall, we had budget problems.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We had budget issues in one of the areas where we kind of was training. So what we're doing with training is we're finding different ways to collaborate with the other utilities that will have the same training needs. And instead of sending our staff to go to travel or to go someplace there for training, we have been working with SCAPA to bring the training here locally. That reduces our costs on a per-person basis, and also the time that it takes for us to be sending folks out. So you should see some increase in that number in the next report, or the next quarter.
Okay. And then, so this is an average. Is there more, is there more training provided to field workers versus office workers, given the, I guess, inherent hazards that come along with field work?
As far as office staff, I can't answer that, but I know that some of the training we're looking at is not just about safety, but it's also in the job skills, things that they need to retain. This includes all the changes in the regulatory environment. So, for example, cybersecurity, we'll probably be sending myself included to training just to understand what the new requirements are. So that's all inclusive. And if we need to, if you think it's, there's value in separating safety training from job training, we could, we could address that also.
Commissioner Camargo, I believe that office staff receive training on a quarterly basis on a variety of issues. Whereas field staff, again, like I mentioned, have daily and weekly tailgate meetings with more of an emphasis on safety out in the field.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, safety, I think, is, got to be the sort of prerequisite priority here, right? Make sure that folks are getting their work done safely. So I'd answer your question, yes, I would appreciate seeing a breakout with the, of safety training versus other forms of training.
We shall.
Two other items. So on number 61, related to cash reserves. So there, certainly we're making good progress, which is, which is outstanding. So the question is, what is the forecast? Do we currently have a forecast as to when we would get to a point where we're actually meeting the established reserve requirement?
No. When we did a rate case two years ago, when we established the rate increase of 87522, at the end of the five-year, we anticipate that we'll get up closer to $100 million. I don't believe we will get up to 124. And one of the situations Mr. Zerner is looking at is whether or not we need to go back to council and just adjust what our cash reserve needs are, but we have not completed the study. So at the end of the fifth year, after the last rate increase, we'll be close to 100 million, not the 124 that the council has recommended for us to keep.
Okay. And then finally, I have a request with respect to the overall format. President Chan mentioned a little bit regarding the format. So one of the issues I think we've discussed here as a Commission in the past is the inclusion of targets or goals in this report. So here, certainly you can see progress between the last fiscal year and the current fiscal year. What would be an improvement to this report, at least as it gets presented here to this Commission, would be an inclusion of those areas in which we have targets. So if we have targets for SADI and SAFI, for example, what those targets are, so that we can have an image of not just, you know, year-to-year improvements over where we have been, and sort of a retrospective view of the key performance indicators, but then also sort of a forward-looking, what are we, what are we aspiring to? What are our goals in some of these areas? I can appreciate that we may not have goals in every one of these categories, but I believe that we have some.
Yes, and we do have goals on most of this, so we will include those.
So then, as we look forward to reporting, so this kind of closes out the last fiscal year, then I would request that as we, as we prepare the first reports, looking forward to 14-15, that we start to include those goals. Is that something we can do?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Those are, those are my questions.
My only observation would be to include total usage on the water and the power side. We actually don't have any kind of metric here for just sheer number of gallons produced for the water system for the customers, or electrons produced kilowatt hours. Might be just useful at a glance kind of information to have at the top line.
You're talking about the demand?
Yeah.
For, okay.
Okay.
I do have a couple more questions after looking at it a little bit more. I agree with both the Commissioners' comments and requests. Piggybacking on Commissioner Camargo's comments with the safety, item 39, you might have addressed it already, but as I was going through these columns, I may not have heard it. Number of workdays lost per employee due to occupational accidents, third quarter, there's a 17 there. And can you explain to us a little bit more about that? Why was there a 17 for the third quarter?
17 appears to be awfully high. I'm not sure. I think that may be a typo. It might be, it should be 1.7, but I will need to confirm that with you. Or I'll need to confirm and get, get back with you.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
That does seem quite, an outlier.
Doesn't make sense.
I would address that, I believe, during the third quarter, had it been there.
Okay. And then 28, number of preventable outages. So there's five for the fourth quarter, which made the fiscal year to be a seven. Can you talk a little bit about that, why we have such high preventable outages?
I will defer to Mr. Abueg regarding the outages.
Yeah, for this period, I believe we have equipment that failed that we, I think we have two equipment failures, and we had one, what we call switching error. These are things what, that we think through training or if we had the proper maintenance, could have been prevented. And if it makes any difference to you, our goal for preventable outages per year is not to go over 25. That's our original setting. And what we'd like to do is get that down to around 10 per year. And what we'd like to do is get that down to around 10 per year. But for every preventable outages that we have, that also gets included into what we call the Accident Review Committee. We take a look at it. And I can present to you, I think I have, I don't think I've done this in a while. All preventable outages, we develop what's called a root cost analysis. What happened, what contributed to the failure, what can we do to prevent that from happening? Not, not the actual cost, but the true root cost that led to that outage. And if you'd like to see one of those, we can present that. I don't think we've done one of those in a few years.
For a while, yeah.
So we can do that, so you can understand the process that we go through. Once we classify something preventable, we do everything we can, be it by training, buying new equipment, or just going through, developing new procedures, we do that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next, next item. Thank you so much for your update.
Forty, water rate update.
That's my cue. If you recall, I mean, I'm sure you recall, when the last time we were in front of you dealing with the water rates, we presented to you a recommendation, and you approved or adopted a motion that we recommend a four-year rate increase of 5%, 4%, 4%, and 4%. When we got in front of the city council, they were originally in agreement of the recommendation, but when we drafted the resolution, we ended up with 4%, 4%, 4%, and 4%. And the main issue is the rate impact that it has on the customer, and also we're still at the tail end of basically the economic downfall that we have. But during that process also, if you follow the process, instead of getting it approved in the one meeting that we hope to get the 4444, we had to go back and make other, and we were asked to look at other scenarios. So in addition to the recommended 54444 and the 44444, we were asked to look at what the impact would be if we look at a combination of fours and threes over four years, including three-fours in a three, and/or even a 2% the first year, and then 3%, 4%. And what we showed using, looking at all the scenarios that we looked, and we probably looked at about 17, 18 different scenarios of what the rate is. And we concluded that the 4% for four years is the best scenario, because that meets all the financial objectives that we have, except for the cash reserves. But it gets us to a cash reserve of about $4.4 million, which is a lot lower than the 11.2 that we desire. But again, it's one of those, is we don't really know what the proper cash reserve should be for water, because what we do know is if we have a major event in water, let's say a reservoir fail, the 11.2 million will not be enough anyway. So we, just like electric, we are looking at the cash reserve requirements, what we truly need for water. And the other change from the recommendation that you had, the resolution you adopted for water, we delayed the implementation of the drought rate by six months. So instead of being effective September 1st, it would be effective sometime in, we have to go back to council and make a recommendation. And the reason for that is at the heels of our recommendation to go with the rate increase, the governor, back in July, declared that a mandatory conservation. Basically, that gets us into phase two for conservation. And what, since we had a drought rate, the first day of the implementation, the new rate will be under the drought rate. That would be a real serious rate shock to our customers, and we agree that's not a good place to be for us. So at the end of the six months, we'll go back to city council and also to you to, to let you know what the impact is of the delay of not implementing the drought rate by six months, and make the proper recommendation at the time.
So council has not approved the 4444, right? Council has not approved the 4444?
Yes, they have.
But they have? Oh, okay.
And that became effective September 1st.
Okay, got it. Okay.
And the 4444 would also get us the pay-go capital that we're looking for, so we continue maintaining our infrastructure. Where we're under that scenario, we should be able to fund $4 to $5 million of capital improvement projects every year.
And you mentioned the drought rate would be, you're proposing delay of six months?
That's correct.
Okay. And when do you plan on, given us the impacts?
We should have some numbers by next month or by December 1st, definitely. We want to collect the right data. We do know that once we've implemented the drought rate, we've seen a reduction in the demand. We have not seen the impact of the new rate. That coupled with the drought rate, we think that we would have reduced usage, if you will, on the water. We just don't have enough days to analyze it.
Okay. I have no other questions. No? Okay. Thank you so much for the update. Next item, please.
Five oral communications.
You don't have any? Next item?
Six agenda forecast.
Okay. Here it is. Okay. So October the 6th, all right, it's our next meeting. Okay, the impacts of the delayed drought rate, that should be listed under December, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We can do that at the same time we do the water conservation.
Update. Okay. Impacts. And, okay, the next KPI update is also December. Hopefully with the new formats, new information, right? Okay. Resource mix.
When would you like to see a sample of root cost analysis that we do on the electric outages preventable? That could be, it's a short.
The cost analysis that you perform for the water rate?
No, and the, like, the root cost analysis.
The root cost analysis, yes.
Preventable outages.
For the outages.
We can show you the process in an example.
Mm-hmm.
Is October too soon?
Yeah.
No, we do that normally, so.
Yeah, let's put in October.
May I suggest November? We have an appeal. I don't know how long that would take.
Oh, that's right. We have an appeal, October.
Well, I should point out that the initial hearing regarding the appeal is consideration of whether you're going to grant an appeal. And so presumably, if you were to grant the appeal, the appeal would take place in November, so.
I see.
October sounds good.
So October's fine. Okay. Good. Good. Let's see.
And Gloria just reminded me what you wouldn't see here. We used to have the NERC-wide compliance program update on a quarterly basis. There's really not much change for the utility our size. We have very little impact on the bulked electric system. So what I suggested is maybe at the start of the year, we would give you updates. And depending on what changes, it's really, the best I could do is no changes, because the most change that we have, or the most that we can report was after the audit that happened a while ago. With the changes happening with the requirements, there's a lot of exclusions that we're looking at, so that a lot of the rules may no longer apply to us. We're trying to really explore that. I mentioned cybersecurity earlier. Even that, because of our impact on the bulked electric system, is none or minimal. What we're trying to do in getting through those trainings is to make sure that we continue to provide the justification for being excluded from that requirement. So in terms of something exciting to report, it's really not much we could do.
So in the past, you've been reporting quarterly?
Correct.
Okay, so right now, you're proposing at the beginning of the year?
At the beginning of the year, just to summarize what changed and what we're doing in terms of compliance.
The next meeting being the beginning of the year, are you proposing only once a year from now on?
That's correct. That's correct.
Just once a year? Oh.
Unless you want to hear more, or more often. If there's any major changes, we'll bring that, we'll bring that up to you accordingly. So the next report I'm proposing would be in July of 2015.
After January?
July would be the first, the first meeting after the fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Oh, I see, the fiscal year you're talking about.
Right.
Hmm.
It's up to you. It's, because I don't, I hate to, I hate to get up to you and just say nothing to report. I'd like to report when there's good data to report.
Okay, I would recommend this. How about beginning of the year and also six months?
That's fine.
Just, just put it in there twice, twice a year regularly, and then if something happens, like sooner than that, you know, then please report it, you know, the in-between times. But if not, at least, you know, the six-month period, you can come up and say, no changes. That's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we'll start July and then January?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam President, I would actually recommend that we move our water bond update to December 1st.
December, yeah. Talked about that earlier.
The water bond is on the November ballot.
Correct.
So, yeah, that, it makes sense for us to tackle that.
Yes, sounds great.
After the election.
Yes.
And that also provides a little bit more time during that discussion in the event that the commission decides to grant Mr. Turgul Stanian's appeal.
Uh-huh. Yes, I agree. Any other changes? Any other suggestions?
No, no other changes, but a question. So, so as a commissioner, I receive materials directly from staff, PowerPoint presentations, things like the strategic plan. But are those materials made public? Are they posted to the website or otherwise available to members of the public?
Correct.
And does that carry for all types of materials that are shared with the commission? Are those, are those all posted, or is it select materials? Can you give me an idea of?
All materials that get sent to you are posted on our, in our website. So if they go to the, if they go to the agenda on the website, they should be able to click on it and access all the materials that were presented to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
What I have found in the past was, I think, the link is only active for a certain amount of time, because I have tried to go back from time to time in the past, and when I click on, like, the original link.
Is that, you're talking about the big mail?
Yes.
I believe it is. Oh, limited time.
Limited time. Okay.
But you can always go to the web, the website.
Okay. And go to, like, the commission agendas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one item that we would bring to you in either March or April of 2015. We're doing our Integrated Resource Plan. You have on January 15th, the repowering options for Grayson Power Plant. We would likely, I recommend we postpone that. When we get, we submit to you the result of the Integrated Resource Plan. One of the items we're looking at as part of the IRP is the repowering options for Grayson. So we won't have anything to report in January until we complete the IRP. So I'd like to recommend to do that at the same time. We're scheduled to complete the IRP in March of 2015, so perhaps we can report to you in April or May, depending on where we are with that report. So we'll report the progress on those two.
So I have a question about that. Is, there might be some value in having us hear those items before they're sort of fully cooked, and just to get a sense of the thinking of utility staff in developing those documents, so it's not just a hearing of the utility's plan, what we could become participants in, some of the direction that the utility's going in. But I don't know if that puts us, puts GWP at any risk with debtors or creditors or bond ratings or anything like that, to have a public hearing of those things before we, the books are finalized.
I don't know from a debt perspective that it poses necessarily any risk, but I think we'll have to evaluate that further. And if we can bring you something before we have, you know, as you call it, a fully-cooked plan, I think even when we've got a report from a consultant, it doesn't necessarily mean that we've made a decision. And so I think we still would want to get this commission and council's input, obviously, before proceeding. So I don't think you'd lose too much there. But that's something we can take back and discuss with Mr. Zern and bring it to you if feasible.
Yeah, so I would actually sort of freeze January for the moment, and then, once we, once you're able to sort of discuss that internally and the pros and cons of presenting that, that before it becomes, you know, sort of fully, fully cooked, that would be my preference, is to take a look at that before you guys have made final decisions and just sort of.
Okay, but I'd like to change that to the Integrated Resource Plan, because the power option, the repower.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So we can give you an update on the IRP, I think.
In January?
In January.
And so are we moving the Grayson Power Plant repowering options, or leaving it there?
We're replacing it with IRP.
Right, so we're taking that out. Right, so we're taking that out. Okay.
Taking it out or moving it down?
Well, it's inclusive. We will not proceed with the repowering without the IRP. So the powering option is a subset of the IRP.
Right, so you're going to include that in the IRP discussion?
Among a whole host of other energy policy options.
Right, right. So both of those remain in January, or IRP goes to January?
We're replacing Grayson with IRP update.
But Grayson will be discussed as well?
In the context of IRP.
Yes, in the context, yes. Okay.
One thing I don't see on our forecast is, at one point in the future, Mr. Zern indicated that he was going to give us a report on the utility's fiber resources, fiber optic resources.
Fiber optic.
And I think it would be nice to have an update on that at some point, as both a business opportunity and just what, what is the status of the, or construction of that infrastructure, if there's any desire by my colleagues here.
Okay.
Yes.
We will.
Yeah.
Let me find out where we are with the business development plan, and we'll get back to you. Mr. Zern will send you an email.
Yeah, I don't see any particular urgency on that, maybe December.
I should note that the, for your consideration, the December meeting is right after the Thanksgiving holiday, and I know that council is dark that week. So I don't know that GWP necessarily has a preference, but the commission may want to consider whether it wants to have a special meeting instead. Just, I throw that out there for consideration.
What I'd recommend is we put it on our forecast for December, and then we can revisit it the next meeting after staff has had a chance to figure out what, when the best timing is.
Yeah, we'll need to look at the calendars. Well, any other suggestions? Changes?
No, none from me. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it looks pretty good so far. Good? All right. Okay, next item, please.
Seven, a German.
So moved.
Still moved? Okay.
Second?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Meeting's adjourned.